Thank you all very much. Thank you very much for A, your attendance here, B, your attention while we do business here, and also for the interest that you have in public education for our students, because really that's why we all are here. As we begin, I would ask Vice Chairman Allison to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. In looking at the minutes from the January 9th meeting, is there any objection to approving the minutes as presented? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Now, in looking at today's agenda for this, the February 13th meeting, is there any objection to approving the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. I want to welcome this good crowd that we have today, those of you in attendance, and to those who may have joined us online. Thank you tremendously, because your interest in public education does matter, and for the State Board of Education in particular. If there are any news media who have not signed in after I announce it, if you would, just please give your name. We have Spencer, Khalil, Gracie, Eric, and Ryan with Nickelodeon. If you want to be addressed, wave, thank you. Thank you very much. Henry Schuster with CBS News, thank you, sir. Naomi, and I'm going to mess this up, Popa, WIS News. Did I mess it up? All right. Jennifer and Tom Wigan, Dorian Delvalle, Corey Connor, Doug Totoria, Ally Redmond, and Danielle Dumas from Band Together Documentary. Are you here? Thank you very much. Thank you also. And then Becky Buds from WLTX, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody that I might have missed? We do have visitors here today as well. It's impressive, the number of people here today. Thank you. If I may, just hold up your hand. I probably might not see it, but they will as I just read off the names, please. Christina Rucker, Melanie Shul, Kathy Manis, Robin Chilton, Elizabeth Kellner, Matthew Truesdale, Ella Schufelt, Gianna Barbouska, Jason Harris, Charlotte Johnson, Lisa Jieskies. Thumbs up, thumb down. I guess it lives. Jana Stevenson, Angela Craig, Melanie Huggins, Harmon Dorn. Like one of my students, I can't quite read this one. Starts with a J, from Scassel. If you want to introduce yourself, please feel free. J, and then it looks like an M. Perfectly fine. Mary Foster, Jeannie Brainerd, Kim McGuire, Virginia Conme, Tucker Taylor, Emily Bacomo, Tamara Cox, Jennifer Wolf, Jamie Gregory, Jonathan Newton, Elizabeth Graham, Christine Baker, Patty Thero, Jane Massey, Alex Bishop, Levita Green, and Vera Wood. I think I have most people who have been signed in, at least at this point. If anyone hasn't... No, no, there will be others. Yes, in a minute. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Just wanted to get that. Then we do have a slate as it relates to people who are willing and will be during our public comment time. Thank you again. Tomorrow's what? Come on, what's tomorrow? Tomorrow's Valentine's Day. I want to thank you again for coming. As you know, tomorrow's Valentine's Day. Red coat, red, pink, all the different colors that's associated with that. And I remember very clearly being young one time ago in early elementary school where we gave each other Valentines. The origin of Valentine's Day comes from a Saint Valentine of Rome, a priest who was martyred in the year 269 AD. According to church history, Saint Valentine displayed love and tenderness even to those who most opposed him, especially the emperor, who actually tried to convince him to convert from Christianity. And he corresponded with the jailer's daughter before his execution, signing letters to her as "Your Valentine." No month is more overtly about love than February. I wonder if there is an unintentional correlation between February being the shortest month and our ability to give, or more likely withhold, love. For those of us in this room, public education is something we all care deeply about. And in this whole room, I mean that. And dare I say, we love it. Although love is often professed, sometimes it's much less likely displayed. But today, however we stand, as evidenced by this crowd here today, love needs to be maintained as a focus. Love for teaching, love for learning, love for those whom we find unlovable, and most of all, for the students who are our future. I close it with last night's devotional that I had just serendipitously. With the American Civil War spawning many bitter feelings, Abraham Lincoln saw fit to speak a kind word about the South. A shocked bystander asked, "How could he do that?" He replied, "Madam, do I not destroy my enemies when I make them my friends?" Thank you very much. State Superintendent, your report, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have to get used to saying "Mr. Chairman" now instead of "Madam Chair," and I hope that our Chrissy, own Chrissy Stapleton has returned to good health soon. I know we miss her today. But thank you for the opportunity to share some of the exciting and encouraging things that are happening within our public education system. As you may or may not know, this week is actually School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. And there are few people who need more appreciation or who we should more appreciate than our school bus drivers. I'd like to share for a minute just a few statistics about school bus drivers here in the state of South Carolina. We currently have about 4,500 currently employed and about 950 assistants on top of that for about 5,500 total drivers and assistants. 340,000 students are transported to school each day on a school bus. The average service time of our bus drivers in South Carolina is just over 17 years, but we do have one veteran in Ori County who has been serving for 52 years as a school bus driver. The average statewide pay is $19.25 an hour, and collectively, our state drivers drive approximately 78 million miles each year. It's an amazing statistic. Many of these routes begin at 5:15 in the morning, and of course, that doesn't count the pre-inspection that they do on their buses before they even ever leave that bus depot. So these are dedicated, incredibly dedicated people working often until 6:30 at night, long routes, especially with the shortage that we have. And as part of my budget presentation to the House last week, I encouraged them to strongly consider a $2,500 retention bonus to our bus drivers who stay with us through the 24-25 school year, because we have a lot of important experience that they represent, and we need to make sure that we maintain them and pay them well. And this statistic, for those of you who are teachers, will certainly give you pause. You can have up to 77 students at one time on a bus. So that's a lot of children to be maintaining control over at any given time. And so our bus drivers are incredibly vital to the functioning of our public education system and to ensuring equality of access to students in every part of our state. And so with that in mind, our intrepid Derek Phillips, Communications Director, got up very, very early a couple of weeks ago and actually went and shadowed a bus driver in Richland 1. And so I'd like to bring you that video today, if we could.
Good morning. How y'all doing? My name is Renee Scott, and I'm a school bus driver at Richland County School District 1. And I have been driving buses with Richland 1 for over 27-plus years. We have us a walk. But I choose to walk to get a little walking exercise in. Let's look at the bus. When I first been on the bus, I get on and I check the bus to make sure there's no animals or someone on the bus that shouldn't be on there. That's the first thing I do. I get on the bus and I walk and do that. So okay, I don't see anything. Then I go outside. And when I'm outside, I still open. And this way, I can look under the seat again. Let's see, it's locked. And then I'm going to do a brake check. And that's basically it, the free trip. When I first got my license, I was on a regular route. But that next year, when I came back, I've been on, I was on a special need route, and I've been driving special need until I retired in January of last year. Then when I came back, I got on this route. And he's always going to be out here waiting, right here. And Dad or Mom is out there with him. I like the children. I like, I don't miss work. I come to work because I don't want my students standing side the road because we're so short, and there's no telling what time. So if I don't have to be off, I don't be. But I, my care and my concern is about the students, making sure they get to school in a safe and timely manner. I don't think transportation should be a hindrance for them. And by me providing a good service and getting them there, then that encourages them, okay, there's no reason why I can't excel. There's no reason why I can't go and do my best in school. I have a ride to school. So it concerns me that me being on time, being there for them is an impact for their lives. Good morning, Lamont. Morning, Corey. Good morning, Leon. How y'all doing? Kindness goes a long way. Kindness and manners will take you where money can't. I didn't come back to work here because I had to. I came back because I wanted to. I was thinking about them children out there. And I asked the Lord if I could reach one, teach one, that my labor is not in vain with Him. All right, Harry, have a good one. I enjoy it, I love it, and I continue to want to be here to service for my children. Thank you.
So if you have an opportunity this week, I encourage you to say a special thank you to our bus drivers all over the state for everything that they do. Just a quick update from a report that I gave you, I believe, at the last board meeting about something that we're calling Project Raise Your Hand, which is a volunteer partner initiative between the Department of Education and our neighborhood district of Richland 1. We now have 10 schools that have raised their hand to ask for volunteer support from employees here at the department. And we have over 70 folks here at the department who have raised their hand to support and serve in those local schools. And so we're very excited. This is a pilot program that we will be running from next week, when they first go to their first school, to the end of May. And we'll look forward to reporting back to you on this service initiative with the hopes that we can continue to grow it. And I'd love to see it across the entire state by the time we finish. So very excited about that, but wanted to give you that quick update. The final thing on my superintendent's report today, obviously, there is a reason why we have a lot of folks here today. And so I just wanted to do, from my perspective, a quick review of how we got here and really what the conversation that we're going to engage in today is all about. This process for the state library reg has been very deliberate and thoughtful. When we first responded to requests, both of members of this board, members of the General Assembly, and feedback that we received from the public about the need for this type of regulation, we said, you know, the first thing that we want to do is make sure that anything that is put in front of this board is carefully crafted and legally defensible. And you all heard last time from a nationally known First Amendment attorney who is from here in South Carolina, who you will hear again from today just outlining some of the technicalities of this process. But as we said at the very first reading of that draft regulation, that's a starting point. There is much conversation and feedback that needs to be heard and received in order to make this regulation the best that it can possibly be. And so as you all are well aware, we've had an extended public comment period, longer actually than most public comment periods typically are. And that has given us the ability to really thoughtfully hear and sift through a lot of the feedback that we have received. I know you all personally have sat down one-on-one and in group scenarios with different constituents in your own areas. I, for my part, have spoken with school board members. I have spoken with superintendents, teachers, as well as parents and just members of the broad community to solicit feedback. And I think that what was brought forward earlier this morning in subcommittee really addressed much of the substantive feedback that we received in order to strengthen the regulation. Because as we have stated from the outset, the goal of this regulation is really to help create uniformity and clarity across the state, because there are so many different competing narratives and standards that have been out there across the district. And so our goal is to remove uncertainty and fear from the backs of our teachers, who are often the ones who are caught in the crosshairs of these ongoing controversies. And I'm sorry to say that this fear has been fomented in many cases, I've seen even throughout this process, by national organizations who are coming into South Carolina trying to impose their pre-written narrative of what this regulation does and doesn't do onto the hard work of this board and the community feedback that we have received and incorporated here. And so I'd like to say to our students who are here today that it is unfortunate, in my opinion, that there are adults and narratives who have actively misled you about what this regulation does and doesn't do. But I want to be entirely clear with you that this regulation in no way silences your viewpoint or your voice. This is simply to describe in a succinct way something that is or is not age-appropriate and aligned with South Carolina's instructional standard. And in fact, the regulation goes on to say numerous times that this should in no way be used to discriminate against anyone's viewpoint. And so I just want to be clear about that upfront. To the teachers who also have been told that this is something that they should be afraid of, I want to say that we, as your Department of Education, should this regulation move forward, are here to work with you, to provide clarity and resources for you as you navigate the use of this regulation, and that this is not in any way intended to be a gotcha game. We are here simply to create clarity and transparency around the materials that are introduced into South Carolina classrooms and libraries at taxpayer expense. And as an example of what I'm talking about, I would point to one of the provisions that were included in the board amendment that I understand was passed in subcommittee earlier today. And that was the dropping of the use of FCC definitions. That's something that I think if you were to talk to the average person on the street, it's pretty intuitive, right? Like they say, well, if it can't be on local TV, then why would we want it in a South Carolina school? And while that sounds like very much common sense, in some ways, we received feedback that that creates more uncertainty. And so again, since our job and our goal here was not to create more uncertainty, I think the board, in its prudential judgment, made a decision that we're going to eliminate that from the regulatory framework. And I think that that was probably the right thing to do in terms of providing something to teachers that is truly useful and clear and understandable. And so the final thing that I'll say today along those lines, in addition to just thanking the board for their work on this, for the time that they have taken to really thoughtfully receive and process all of the feedback that we've received, is again to just call people's attention to the very clear definition that this regulation now provides about what is or is not considered age-appropriate in a South Carolina school. And I think there might have been copies distributed of this, but this is straight out of the South Carolina Code of Laws, Section 1615305(c)(1). And these are the definitions that are incorporated into this regulation. And so what I would challenge folks here to speak against this regulation to do is to look at this list, to look at this list carefully, and to discern and describe, if you will, what provisions of these definitions you believe taxpayer resources should be used to introduce into South Carolina schools. Because at the end of the day, that is what this regulation does, is it prohibits things that are defined on this piece of paper from being purchased at taxpayer expense and put in front of students. So members of the board, with that, I will yield my time and return and conclude my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Weaver. We greatly appreciate that. We also appreciate you out there and your interest in public education. Our roles, as it relates to public comment, is that we hear up to five minutes per commenter and up to 30 minutes for public comment portion to the agenda. In looking quickly at it, we have 13 of one group and 26 of the other. There's really little to no chance for every single person to be given three minutes, five minutes, because we're bound to a timed limit. And anybody that's attended any board meeting realizes that those public comments are limited. Therefore, we have time. However, I would say that due to the number of people wanting to speak, and if we did five and five and five and five, you could do that and only have five people. What I would wish to do is to allow someone from us to make a motion that we shorten public comment length to two minutes. Not five, but two. Two minutes per person, and that we then can hear from more people. And I'm keeping it under the rule of five, please forgive me. It would then be 32 minutes. It would be 32 minutes. So you theoretically could have eight and eight, 16, right? And then that would be 16 times two, 32 minutes. A little over, but not so much. If y'all are okay with that, I can't do it. I can only tell you what I'm thinking. If anybody's in favor of that, if they would make a motion to that event, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, Beverly Frye is in Fifth Judicial Circuit. I so move that to accommodate the people that are here so that we'll be fair and listen to their concerns, we modify our general policy and allow speakers, you said, two minutes as opposed to five.
Yes, just trying to get in more, if we can. Is there a second?
I'd like to second it and also commend you for being brave enough to do math in public.
Some people don't get no respect. All right. Thank you. At this point, we have a motion and a second. It is now before the full board. Can we approve this? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of allowing that for today, based on the number of people here, two minutes. You'll have to keep up with it, and we will then have more people for that. Is that okay? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you. Consequently, we will hear, now here's the deal, trying to be as fair as I can. There are people with multiple people from one organization. For example, CFAD, thank you for being here. Delo, thank you for being here. There are many people scheduled. If somebody wants to forfeit their time, I'm just going to go down the time limit until we can try to take as many of these as possible. If you want your time, you got it, because he who signs up first gets it, or she. Does that make sense? So we will go forward at this time. If I could, have Pastor Tommy Quick, please, come in favor of 43170. Once you start, you'll have two minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, hello, everybody, and God bless you. Thank you for the privilege. I am Apostle Tommy Quick, and I am here today in support of the regulation. I and my wife Valerie, who could not be here today, are the proud parents of five adult children, three of which are here today, 12 grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren, three of which are also here today. I'm also a pastor of 48 years' experience. I founded Promise Land Church of God in Christ, and I am the founder and president of Christian Families Against Destructive Decisions in Spartanburg, South Carolina, which has become a national organization. We're here, very proud to be before you, and we're grateful for the work that you've done and what we've realized by the law that you've shown, that you've actually done a lot of the work. There's no need for me to read from any of the books and their vulgarity to show you why it's important that we address this. I think that the need for this regulation is illustrated by the ongoing debate and the lack of consensus on what constitutes age-appropriate and educationally suitable materials in South Carolina. The proposed policy by the state board, the response from the civil rights organizations, the introduction of legislation, and the challenges in implementing educational standards all contribute to the current state of confusion and disagreement among various parties involved in education within our state. Your leadership and responsibility, I believe, is actually biblical. You are the guardians. You are those that stand between our children and vulgarity. And you hold a specific power right now, amen, to do something to make things different. The collective message of the Scriptures encourages leaders, including school board members, to embrace their roles of stewards of children, education, and the moral development, acting with integrity, responsibility, and a focus on the welfare of those that they lead. The role of the school board as guardians can be deeply informed by the Scriptures. You are to be advocates, protectors, moral instruction, parental authority, protecting the parental authority, and providing leadership.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry, because you got dealt a bad blow, and I don't ever want to tell a pastor to be quiet. But the reality is, it's two minutes. So what we're going to try to do is get more people in. And I'm sorry, but thank you.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and I appreciate it. And guys, if you're coming up, if you're thinking about it, you've got two minutes, because we're trying to get more people in. If Kate Salvatelli with Delo would come forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Salvatelli, and I am the president of Charleston's Academic Magnet High School Chapter of Delo, the Diversity Awareness Youth Literacy Organization. I have grown up in the South Carolina public school system, and I am astounded in the language in the proposed regulation 43170 and in parallel censorship legislation being considered. If approved, 43170 will undermine the well-earned trust for my esteemed teachers, counselors, and librarians. I am inspired by all of the loving, dedicated, and educated professionals who have taught me to be my best. However, this regulation leaves me feeling sorrow and concern, not just for my teachers, but for my fellow students. I love literature and learning. In the books I read, I am constantly surrounded by characters who are similar to myself, as well as ones who represent my friends who are in the LGBT... well as ones who represent my friends, who are in the LGBTQ, Black, Asian, and Jewish and other communities. Books with inclusive representation have always been my favorite, because they let me experience what it's like to be in other shoes. I would not be the supportive, learned person I am today without these books or my teachers. So why would you take away the ability of our trained educators to choose the books and curriculum most appropriate for their students? Are you afraid of what will happen if students are represented? Are you afraid of someone like myself will support people who are not me? Are you afraid of empathy, understanding, history, and the truth? If we allow books in our classrooms and libraries to be challenged by anyone at all, what will the rules be around that? Can extremists without any students in the school system write complaints? Why aren't students, who are most directly impacted by book bans and censurships, allowed on review committees? Will challenged books be kept on library shelves while they would be reviewed? And is there a limit to the number of books one person can challenge? One article I read said as few as 13 people are responsible for the majority of book bans nationwide. Ask yourselves, is it your, is your responsibility to these handful of extremists or to your students? Students like me and those of us here today from Delo chapters across our state. We trust our teachers and librarians, and we ask you to do the same. I have two more years in the public school system, and I will be showing up to every school board meeting locally and statewide.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Right. Okay. The parliamentarian just reminded us, as it relates to, to recognize public hearing as compared to an audience, per se. The second person that is up to speak, and again, if you yield your time, you can, I'll just go down the list, is Brianna Benton.
Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Benton. I'm here on behalf of CFAD. I am the daughter of Apostle Quick, which you heard earlier. One of the greatest joys of childhood is innocence, and everything a child comes to know must be learned. They trust us, the parent, school board, and other adults in their lives to teach them what's right and expose them to things at the appropriate time. We can't raise every child in our neighborhood, county, or state, and we can't protect them from everything they may potentially be exposed to, but there was once something called common decency. And we have an opportunity to remove this sexual material from within their reach in our own public school libraries. We love that the library is full of books that provide both useful information about the world around us and provide a wonderful escape into many creative worlds with wonderful characters. However, I'd like to point out that in the public schools, the state of South Carolina law requires that parents be informed in advance of any sexual, sexual, specific instruction. So tell me why that we would allow access to children to obscene material, some of it giving instruction in our library. It's a double standard, plain and simple. Even when we go to see a movie at our local theater, there are generally ratings available. According to the Motion Picture Association of America's Film Rating System, any movie with nudity automatically requires a PG rating, and PG means parental guidance. And if it is, has more brief nudity, more than brief nudity, then it's PG 13, meaning parental guidance for ages 13 and up, and so on. Is this rating system the law? No, it is not. But it is a courtesy, it is common decency, and it's respect shown for families, for parents, and for children. Now, some of the books that I've seen in the public libraries include not just nude pictures of the ble, the breast, clit, vagina, penis, scrotum, and also children being aroused and even reaching an orgasm. And I would hate to know that such content is available to children to just pick up and read in the so-called safety of our public school. The line must be drawn. We should not be, they shouldn't be in the public libraries, in the school libraries.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Our second person to schedule to speak is Dylan Rhine. Dylan Rhine.
Real quickly, I'd like to preface my statement by informing you that I was not misled. I have done the research, I've read the regulation, I'm here by my own choice. With that said, my name is Dylan. I'm a sophomore and member of Delo Academic Magnet High School in Charleston. I came here today because I am terrified. In my own county, I have watched the school system become a battlefield of parents and adults warring their ideas and towering, touting their opinions in a tug-of-war over children's education. I've spoken at several school board meetings and watched them devolve into us versus them. And admittedly, I'm an opinionated teenager. I've picked a side and defended it. But when we draw these harsh lines in the sand and decide there are only two options, a win or a loss, we are entirely forgetting what matters most, the education of our children. Something I've learned in my biology class is that extremes often die out. The natural world has a tendency to meet in the middle, and sure, while I defend the right to read, I acknowledge that kindergartners should not have the same access to books as high schoolers. If we want the best for every kid in the South Carolina school system, we need to put down our swords and meet in the middle. For example, the R 43170 regulation proposes total ban of sexual content at every age level. But is that what's best for students? The age of consent in this state is 16 years old. Most teens are 16 by the end of their sophomore year. Our sex ed classes are brief. We have one lecture on Aaron's Law, and most high school kids, who are legally allowed to give consent, still don't recognize signs of abusive relationship or know what to do if something goes wrong. I'm not proposing that we let any book with graphic sexual content into our library, but books carefully selected with messages of reporting abuse, making careful choices of what consent should look like, are books that kids can benefit from. Do I know how to write that into regulation? No. But I do know, finding a middle ground where students will benefit is better than staying stuck where we are.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. To the extent that can be done, please, to the extent that can be done, try to hold applause to the very end, just as a please. We also have at this point next up, John Burnside. Do you yield time?
My name is Joshua Quick, also from CFAD. I'll make my comments as brief as possible. I just wanted to shed light that I once was a teenager in high school, and the truth is, the reason why God gave all children parents is because they need guidance. There are a lot of things that I would have advocated for as a 13, 14, 15, 16-year-old that as an adult I don't advocate for. Quite simply, when many of us look back at those years, we think we were stupid. Just to be honest, they don't know that, because they're still in those ages. And while we value their opinions, those opinions need to be filtered through their parents directly and not, and not be just exposed to any and everything. At the end of the day, sex is the most destructive weapon. The reason we have so many behavior issues is because of single-parent homes, fatherless children, misguided children, unguided children, because somebody engaged in a sexual relationship that they should not have. We would not put a machine gun in the hands of a five-year-old, and we should not just release the most dangerous weapon in humanity, which is sex, to five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years old, for them to be feeling on one another and exploring with their sexuality with one another. What would our world look like in another 10, 15 years? How many fatherless children would there be? How many abandoned children would there be? Because we, the gatekeepers, the adults, the school board, the parents, just allow any obscene material to be exposed. I'm not here talking about gender. I'm not here talking about sexuality. I'm here strictly talking about the power of uncontrolled sex and lust. It's not education, that's not educational, but it just releases people to do and think anything that they, do anything that they think of. And if we look back, if we had the ability at the age of 15 and 16, we would have gotten in a whole lot more trouble. There'd be a lot more human beings running around than there are today. So thank you so much for your hard work and your diligence. Thank you for the young people that are here to, to voice their opinions. I think that it's very important, but we as adults must make a stand and make it very clear what's acceptable.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. At this point, I would like to ask Miki Thompson from Delo to come forward.
My name is Miki Thompson, and I am a 2023 graduate of Beaufort High School. Currently, I am a biology major at the University of South Carolina Beaufort, but I'm also pursuing a minor in education. I am the current president of the Delo chapter at USCB. I would like to first thank the members of the board for their time and consideration, and I hope you are able to appreciate some of the points that are being brought to your attention today. In recent years, there's been an exorbitant rise in book challenges. According to the American Library Association, from 2022 to 2023, there was a 20% increase in challenges. With hundreds of books being taken off of shelves in response to these complaints, it is more pertinent now than ever to remember one of the founding principles of justice in America, innocent until proven guilty. The main reasoning behind banning certain titles is because they may contain, may contain material that some individuals find objectionable or inappropriate. Removing these books from libraries for the duration of the review operates under the assumption that they are guilty, so to speak, and must be proven innocent rather than the inverse. Even if a book is restored to schools in a timely manner, which is rarely the case, the damage has been done. Hundreds of students that could have read that book have been denied the opportunity, often for no good reason, as in this scenario, the challenged book was ultimately found innocent. Schools are meant to prepare a child for life in the real world, so what sort of precedence does this system establish? It tells students that in the face of opposition, they will be silenced until it can be made certain that they are able to fall in line. A single complaint is capable of removing a work from the public for what can amount to up to a year, simply because they might contain content that one person finds subjectively inappropriate. All this to say, when a book is challenged, the initial response should not be to immediately take it off of shelves. Instead, allow the book to remain in the libraries while it is under review, so we can avoid the current convoluted practice of removing every single book that has a criticism attached to it, only to return it after it's been cleared. Grant the books the due process that they deserve. They are innocent until proven guilty. Please do not afford those that would attempt to silence a voice, even if for only temporarily, the means do, at least not until the crime, for the sake of the analogy, is proven beyond a shadow of a doubt. In the wise words of Ray Badbury, "There is more than one way to burn a book, and the world is full of people running about with lit matches." Don't fan the flame, keep the books on the shelves.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, there is one other individual, possibly JB Wheeler. I may be mistaken on your name, but it's from CFAD. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. And you'll just identify yourself as you come up, ma'am. Thank you.
Good afternoon, school board members. I'm in favor of SCR 43170. To work effectively and to protect children, you also will need to remove South Carolina schools from the exemption to obscenity laws. A mother came to me, and she brought me the book from Imogen, obviously. It's from Greenville High Academy. The teacher gave an assignment to the students to take home the book and read it, and that they will discuss it in class. When she approached the teacher, she said, "That was not an assignment, but it was, because it's not written, so they gave it verbally." So I told her, "If your kid has to read it at home and then come to school and talk about it, that's an assignment." And I'm going to read what the book says. It says, "Like, it's so persuasive. This girl doesn't know shit about me," excuse the language, "but you need to hear, because they hear it. Oh, I have the dyed hair. I'm wearing overalls. Hey, I must want to fuck you in a movie theater bathroom," Gretchen exhales, the sheer arrogance. "You may say she may show her ass." I glanced slightly to Gretchen, who laughed and showed a hand over my face. "You fucking nerd. I love you goddamn much. I felt the way I always feel when I managed to cheer someone up." So that's uncomfortable. Why are we going to read stuff like that in a classroom with boys? And some boys may have active sex life, and they only think about sex, and then they're going to go to another class, and they're not going to be thinking about learning academics.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would you do me a favor, just to get your name? I'm sorry. I just want to, I think I have it.
Susanna Sarabia?
Yes, ma'am, I have it. Thank you very much. I wanted to make sure. All right. Our next presenter or speaker is Patrick Goode.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this board. I am Patrick Goode, president of Beaufort Academy Chapter of Diversity Awareness Youth Literacy Organization, or Delo. Throughout my experience with Delo, my grandmother has read every book with me and adored every one. We've had two-hour-long conversations about these books, and it has brought us closer together. That was until we read The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison, one of the 97 books challenged in Beaufort County, where I live. My grandmother said that it was awful. She told me she kept waiting for something good to happen, but it never did, and that the book was too dark and unrealistic. Shortly after this conversation, one of my mom's students, a teacher in Beaufort County, said that she was being physically, physically and sexually abused by several members of her family. My grandmother's opinion of The Bluest Eye did a 180. Instead of seeing an unrealistic, dark book, she saw instead a girl who, street she passes twice a week to get groceries. She realized this book wasn't too dark, she just never held a candle to the dark and looked at it in the eyes. Beaufort County and counties in South Carolina are just like this, and just like the books, it is their ignorance, and it is frankly embarrassing. In 2020, the Child Welfare League of America reported that over 14,000 children were the victims of abuse or neglect in South Carolina. Books like The Bluest Eye can help students process and heal from the things that happened to them, and it can help the rest of us, the lucky ones, understand their experiences. As you consider Regulation 43170, I want to leave you with some questions. Why can a student walk home after school, get to her house, walk in the door, and experience things she is not allowed to read? Why are students who are directly impacted by these government restrictions on what they cannot, cannot read, can and cannot read, being left out of this process? As this board continues to work of supporting the education and academic intellectual freedom of South Carolina students, please consider adopting the amendments of Regulation 43170 proposed by South Carolina Association of School Librarians. Please listen to your librarians and your students. And I would like to urge you to look at Greta Thunberg, one of New York Times credited.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. All right. We have Angelina Davenport.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Weaver and members of the board. My name is Angelina Davenport. I'm a resident of Berkeley County. I come before you today in full support of Regulation 43170, and I'd like to share why. First of all, nobody is trying to ban books. By definition, banning is the removal of any access to all, and that is not what we are talking about. We are talking about sexually explicit materials freely available to minor children in an academic setting and the lack of parental knowledge or consent. It does not take an expert to know that sexually graphic and obscene content has zero educational value and is completely inappropriate for kids. It does not take an expert to understand that we can discuss tough topics and be inclusive without knowingly exposing children to sexual obscenity that effectively promotes minors to participate in pedophilia, sodomy, violent rape, prostitution, and so on. For example, the movie The Sound of Freedom, a PG 13 movie, tells a powerful story about minor sex trafficking without a shred of sexually graphic content, and it was the number-one movie in America for quite some time. Yet our school libraries and even classrooms knowingly provide materials that graphically detail like encounters. Parents aren't being told, oh, and how dare we even question it? Let me say that again. Parents aren't being told that our children have carte blanche, carte blanche access to what is effectively porn in the school library that our tax collectors pay for, or that assigned coursework includes sexually explicit content, and we should be totally okay with it. If you have nothing to hide, where's the transparency? Here's what I'd like to know. When did teachers and librarians get to decide that sexually explicit content is okay for kids? My mom had to sign a permission slip for me to watch A Land Before Time, a G-rated movie, and now we include All Boys Aren't Blue excerpts in our AP Lang syllabus. It has zero educational value and is literally the most controversial book in America. This is not a political issue. This is a moral issue that is being politicized. We are a moral people, are we not?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. We have Mary Ruth.
Hello. I am Mary Virginia Ruth.
Ruth, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. I messed up your name.
Oh, you're all good. Most people get it wrong. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Mary Virginia Ruth, vice president of the Beaufort High School Delo chapter. The First Amendment is central to any discussion of book bans. Students have a constitutional right to receive information. While yes, government censorship is unconstitutional, school boards are permitted to pull books from school libraries that are not beneficial or appropriate for their students, in keeping with local community standards. Families can do the same for their students with opt-out forms. The argument over what meets those requirements is a long and nonproductive one for today's purpose. Today's purpose is to decide how to handle these arguments if they can escalate to the state level. In Federalist X, James Madison worried for our futures, our country's future with factions. Small groups that seek to make decisions for the whole often don't take into consideration the inclusive aims of our democracy. I'm advocating for the process of challenging controversial books to itself be far more challenging for the challengers than this regulation makes it. By giving potentially harmful people the ability to affect school libraries in all counties in South Carolina, we give factions too much power to disrupt and dismantle public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Number six, please. This would be Josh Malkin.
I'm coming.
No, you're fine. No, you're fine.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Malkin. I'm currently a lawyer and senior advocacy strategist with the ACLU of South Carolina, but more importantly, I'm a former educator. I spent five years teaching middle school and high school math in New Orleans East. I left my time in the classroom with an understanding of the profession's difficulties that I do not think one can have unless they spend time in the profession. I left my time in the classroom with profound disrespect for educators. To those of you who have dedicated your lives to public education or truly supporting educators, I share my awe and appreciation, both on the board and in the room here. Unfortunately, there are those who are proudly calling for the dismantling of public education and those who have, perhaps unknowingly, been deputized in this attack. Those pulling the strings are driven largely by profit or prejudice, and while these architects are well-funded, they have one large obstacle: people across the political spectrum support public education. An appreciation for those who dedicate their lives to those who see and serve all students, even on their hardest days. It seems the architects have found a tragically effective solution to this problem: the demonization and disrespect of public educators. People and radical decision-makers, often without children in the public school system, go to school board meetings to talk about the indoctrination of students and the dissemination of materials that are not appropriate. It is not surprising that the surge in such language has coincided with the exacerbated educator shortage. Such attacks inherently disrespect the profession and harm individual professionals. For example, when this department cut ties with Schazl, the then-president, was doxxed and forced to resign. Some people horrifyingly called that a win. Recently proposed Regulation 43170 endorses the misformed idea that educators have an agenda beyond dedicating their lives to do all they can for their students. It will, despite assurances to the contrary, ban books that are on the AP exam, ban books that are revered as classics, ban books that help students develop empathy, and ban books that save lives. It suggests that our educators don't already place great value in building relationships with parents. It will take parental rights away from the overwhelming majority of parents.
Thank you, thank you very, very much, sir. All right, as a point of clarification, if I may, as a point of clarification, in favors and opposition?
Sir, I couldn't get to it, but I just said I have amendments I would support.
Okay.
I would get to the regulation as originally drafted.
So, and I'm just trying to catch. It would be in opposition at this point, correct?
Without getting to the part I got to.
I'm sorry, I just ran out of time. At this point, we will give... Hold up. Elena Lewis, if Elena Lewis is here? I'm going to take that into account, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you tremendously.
Hello, thank you, sorry, Lana Lewis. Thank you for considering some amendments to the regulation. I'm here from a district that has decent policies already in place that has actively been ignoring them. Our district has hard-working, degreed librarians who are overworked and already spread thinly. We spent countless unpaid hours this past school year dealing with 93 cookie-cutter, copy-and-paste book challenges, only for our district to sort of decide to comply with this as-yet-umm passed regulation. At least, that's what they said at a board meeting. They have given no information to the actual librarians there. As a result of this, this year, we've had one librarian quit, several others who will be leaving at the end of the year because they can't wait, or they don't want to leave their students, and we've also had several longtime, well-loved employees dealing with severe mental health issues, including stress when we were forced at the last minute to livestream our meetings. Some of these people have no social media presence, and we're very uncomfortable being forced online. I promise you that librarians in our district and across the state have good intentions. It's not the librarian versus parent paradigm that people are suggesting. In our district, the parent that challenged 93 books never has spoken to the librarians at her child's school. I love when parents communicate with me. I had a mother who one time asked for books for her twin boys. She wanted to do a book club read aloud with her twin boys. I had moms at back-to-school night who have been excited about the rainbow of books with diverse characters on my shelves that reflect her family. So librarians are real peoples, not the enemy, and we would appreciate being included in these. We are concerned that we are not hearing anything directly from the State Department or, in my case, from our district. Ultimately, what I do every day is a lot more than purchasing books. It's a small portion of my job. I'm actively teaching. I'm the only teacher that teaches every student in the school, from our special needs classes to every general education class. So, please, we would love for you to consider hearing our voices, as well as all of the other parties you mentioned.
Thank you very, very much. All right, we will now go back, as Ms. Sarabia had mentioned, we will now have a number six in favor of a... Melissa, go forth, please. And I am, and just as a preface, at the point of just contention, you are speaking in favor of?
In favor of this morning's amendments.
Okay, then.
That's okay. I am a concerned parent of a third grader and kindergartner at Riverbank Elementary in the Lexington II School District. I attend or watch every school board meeting and workshop, always paying close attention to the decisions made by our Board of Trustees. It brings to my attention today that one of my board members is behind me. In the past year, our district has made headlines for having nearly 30 books challenged by just four individuals. Pace for Lex II began as a conservative group providing its members with information about BOT meetings and the KEC policy process, but quickly dissolved into posts filled with hate. One of the book's complainants, who you've heard from already, wrote, "Authors who celebrate and promote the LGBTQ+ agenda are always pushing critical race theory and social justice propaganda and vice versa. It's all intertwined." After additional media coverage of the book challenges, posts by Pace for Lex II participants read, "Great job exposing these rumors. Keep applying the pressure." Another encouraged the group to name and shame teachers that were supposedly reading books they didn't condone, with the group's administrator simply saying they weren't privy to that information. Before the Pace for Lex II challenges, our district had never received a book challenge complaint or a KEC report. Does this regulation include a way for parents to appeal or overturn a book challenge? The proposed regulation would allow an unlimited number of books to be challenged by one person or maybe just a small group. These complainants don't deserve the right to limit the resources that my children acquire, and I worry you'd be handing them power to make politically motivated decisions. In regards to the obscenity amendment this morning, referencing the dropping of the FCC regulations and the policy and instead using SC 1615305, please don't forget Section B, particularly Part III. "To a reasonable person, the material taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. We love our librarians and trust them and their expertise on appropriate educational significant resources for our children. We appreciate their referrals. They have never led us in the wrong direction. I hope we can say the same about the South Carolina State Board of Education once this is all said and done." Thank you.
All right, at this point, we would like to listen to Catherine Fraley.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Catherine Fraley. I'm a parent and a teacher librarian, and I first want to say, our children are not stupid. They are wise beyond their years, and they are brave, and I thank them for their courage for being here today. In the proposed regulation, the school board insists that there are going to be no costs incurred by the state, and this is not true, and sadly, we do have the data to back that up. When a large number of books are challenged, such as in the case of Berkeley County and Beaufort County, districts have to pay for the materials and the manpower to follow policy. According to a recent estimate by Mary Dimitrov from the Island Packet, the review of 97 books cost the district $8,500 for the materials alone. The Spring Branch Independent School District in Harris County, Texas, spent over $30,000 and 16 staffers to review books this past March. School districts across the state of Florida have spent between $34,000 and $135,000 annually to comply with new state laws. For this reason, I urge you to consider the amendment that was drafted and signed off by multiple organizations that would limit the number of challenges per month that a parent can bring forward. Recently, in Dorchester II, a parent challenged 673 books, stating that they had inappropriate and pornographic content, and I brought one of those pornographic books to read to you today, and I'll try to read the whole book and not just an excerpt. So this is the Family Book by Todd Parr. Some families are big, some families are small. Some families are the same color, some families are different colors. All families like to hug each other. Some families live near each other, some families live far from each other. Some families look alike, some families look like their pets. My kids laugh at that part. All families are sad when they lose someone they love. Some families have a stepmom or stepdad and stepsisters or stepbrothers. Some families adopt children. Some families have two moms or two dads. Some families have one parent instead of two. All families like to celebrate special days together. Some families eat the same things, some families eat different things.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I didn't hear any porn, by the way.
All right, I think if handwriting will allow, Linda Fisher.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Linda Fisher, and I'm from York County. We are, as we are in the midst of Black History Month, let me begin by quoting from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. As such, I have come to speak in support of Superintendent Weaver's resolution to rewrite the public school library collection standards, and I have come with examples of why Dr. King's words are my guidance. The representations I bring you, found in the libraries of public schools where our children's perspectives are formed and sustained, are not only sexually explicit and inappropriate, but they are stereotypically slanderous and racially debasing. I submit the reason they are in our school libraries is that the current standards are ambiguous and leave too much to personal interpretation. I will leave these books excerpts with you, and I respectfully direct your attention to the quote on page 64 of the book The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. I'm sorry, but I have to, have to give you this verbatim. This is one of the quotes on page 64. "Indians are living proof that niggers fuck buffalo." That quote is so filthy, it bears no further comment. However, it is worth mentioning that a great deal of time in this book is devoted to the exuberance of a 13-year-old boy, the main character, as he becomes aware of the joys of sexual self-gratification. I spent several years of my professional life in minorities ministry with United Methodist Church, and I will tell you unequivocally that to aver, as this book does, that Native American fathers are all alcoholic wife-beaters and child abusers is an abject lie. Now let us turn our attention to the second example I bring you. Please note that the cover of this book, Report on All Boys Aren't Blue, is shown quite visibly that it is not for minors. But it yet too is in our middle schools. I respectfully direct your attention to page nine and the quote that "There is no blackness without queer people." Fortunately, I am not a 13-year-old child that can be confused by the queer theory.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm a relatively...
Sorry, thank you, it was two minutes.
You get the point.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. All right, and... All right, so we will have, at this point, the last one in opposition, and then I will give hold serve to the ones in favors that will come up. Natalina Childs, please, maybe Natalia Childs, thank you.
Hello, my name is Natalia. I'm one of those misinformed students that you were talking about, and I would just like to say that this is seven pages of nonsense. You guys sit here and you talk about, you know what you're talking, that you guys know all this, what you're talking about, you... Hold up, sorry. My bad. I'd first like to say, there's this line on the second page that says, "This has no effect on public health." Well, public health isn't just about sickness or disease, it's about the population's physical well-being, and this physical well-being leads to our bodies, and one of those physical... My bad. One of those physical issues plaguing is domestic and sexual violence experienced by many young women. This topic is very stigmatized in our society. We are taught from a young age that our bodies are not our own, and that if we are raped, we had it coming. Not only that, but we are silenced and told not to speak about it. However, one way we find our voice is through this writing. Much of that sexually explicit content you talk about is us using our voices to share the stories that we've had. By silencing them, you are not only harming them, but every future generation of young women. You're putting them at risk for abuse and assault by taking away any chance they have of the access to knowledge you need to combat it. You're reinforcing the stigma of assault by putting all women at risk because you don't want to read about it. Well, guess what? It's not about you. It's about providing young women the resources they need to protect themselves. We are not being protected from these sexually explicit themes or being silenced by those who want to maintain their power. My mom is a trauma therapist who has female clients, someone as young as three years old, you mean, three years old, come in and sharing their experiences of assault. Are you really going to tell that child, when she grows up, she's not allowed to have access to these banned topics? Oh, and you want to talk about topic of protection? Let's talk about the fact that the Moms for Liberty will continue to harass our school librarians, teachers, and even students. I have witnessed students in my school come in and harass my librarian, and the students in my school have their emails confiscated because they dared to even speak about this. I think it's quite hypocritical that the people who built their platform, uh, when it protects people, are using scare tactics to silence when it oppresses them. You guys have no room to talk about...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. All right, and we will, we will end the conversation. I think it's Diana Simone. Simone.
And before my two minutes begin, can I say that I think what happened is, some of the people who signed the pro side were pro for your changes, so we had some of them on the, on the pro side.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And that was, that was unknowing. I don't think they did that on purpose. So my name is Diana Simone, I live in York County. I am president of the Born to Fly Project to Stop Child Trafficking, which I founded two decades ago. We work in 65 countries. I speak to you today not just as someone who's fought child trafficking for two decades, but also on behalf of trafficking survivors, and I know many. What I say today is what survivors want you to know. If I asked you how children get trafficked, you'd probably say they're abducted. But that's not true. They're not abducted, they're recruited and groomed, and it's a long process. Why? So that kids are bonded to them. Survivors want you to know that one of the ways traffickers groom them is through obscene material. They do this so that they use it to desensitize and normalize behavior that any child instinctively knows is wrong. I have links for you, which I will pass out, including from survivors. Survivors will tell you that traffickers showed them obscene material with the goal that someday they'd be in obscene material, posted online, someone would buy it, and the children would be... That is child trafficking, buying and selling, and the product is children. But you might argue that's protected by the First Amendment, and we know it's not. Pornography is protected, but obscene material is not, and South Carolina law is very detailed about what is obscene material. What will you do now that you know that these books play right into the hands of traffickers?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. And thank all of you. It could have lasted, and we are appreciative. In the haste to get to the public comment, I accidentally omitted the parliamentarian comment, which may become more appropriate at this point. So at this time, I would like to ask for John Tyler to come and take the whale, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, honorable members of the State Board of Education. Our parliamentarian comment today, 'Tis the season. It's almost March, and your statement of economic interest is due. You can go to ethics.sc.gov, seek additional information from my office on how to make those filings. The due date is March 30th. I'm told it does not take long, and it doesn't hurt much. So please make your filing. If you have basic, high-level questions, please reach out to my office. If you have more in-depth questions, you can reach out directly to the Ethics Commission. And once again, March 30th is your deadline. Please get those filings in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving into the State Board items, the Policy and Legislative Subcommittee met earlier today and did meet and approved to present before the Full Board Committee Regulation 43170 with revisions. That will come later, and we also received information from Basil Harris regarding waivers from the SDE. That concludes the report from the Policy and Legislative Committee. I would now like to recognize Ms. Johnson to present the Educator Professions Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee did approve three action items: the identification of critical subject areas for 2425, the identification of critical needs geographic areas for 2425, and... for 24, 25, the identification of critical needs geographic areas for 24, 25, and a new program to help with certification, New Educator Preparation Program Approval Recommendations, which is called Teach Right USA. Those three, we move to the consent agenda.
All right, a motion has been made from the committee, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the motion carries. At this time, I would like to recognize, well, Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee didn't meet, so there is no report from them. At this point, I would like to recognize Ms. Joyce Kreminger to present the Educator Licenseur Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Education Licenseur Committee heard 15 cases in total today, with one public reprimand, one permanent revocation, 10 suspensions, one approval for initial certification, and two denials for initial certification. These matters were ratified during the full board ELC.
Thank you very much, and as it relates to the full board ELC, the full board did meet this morning. We had one case that resulted in a suspension, and then we did just exactly as Mrs. Kreminger said, we ratified the report of the ELC Subcommittee. At this time, if we would bear attention to the consent agenda, the consent agenda has been distributed, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Kreminger. She's made a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Walters, thank you. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, there is none, the motion carries. At this time, I would like for the South Carolina Board of Education report to come up, which specifically deals with the second reading for the proposed State Board of Education Regulation Reg. 43-170 Uniform Procedure for Selection or Reconsideration of Instructional Materials. I would ask Mr. Coleman to come forward, please, Miles.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
If I may be permitted, a point of personal privilege, can I start by saying that this meeting thus far has given me such hope for the future of our state and for the future of public education. The active public participation from members, young and old, black and white, pro and con, to have young people, 16, 17-years-old, displaying the enormous courage to stand in front of a powerful board at a state agency and speak their views, whether we may agree with them or not, is encouraging to me, and I hope it has been to you as well. Now, you may remember that two months ago, I was here and subjected you all to a perhaps unwanted lecture on constitutional law and the First Amendment. I hope my remarks today can be shorter and more abbreviated as well. To give you a sense of what I'd like to do in the next few minutes, I'd like to divide my comments into four sections. First will be a few introductory remarks. Second, we can go through change by change and briefly touch on the points in the red line of the proposed revised version of the regulation you have before you. Third, I'll respond briefly to a few of the comments and questions that we've already heard during the public comment period. And fourth, I'd of course be happy to answer any questions that you all may have. So first, as to the brief introductory matter, I won't give you all the full introduction that I shared last time. My name is Miles Coleman, I'm a First Amendment lawyer, I work at Nelson Mullins Riley &amp; Scarborough, and a significant practice of my, portion of my practice is devoted to First Amendment law. Two months ago, the department asked me to review and opine on the legality and enforceability of this, which I did, I'm sure you will recall that, and then a day or two ago, I got a version of this red line. As I understand it, in the two months that have transpired, I, you'll see, got a new pair of glasses, and each of you, I understand, has probably received hundreds, if not thousands, of emails pertaining to this proposed regulation, and I understand that department leadership and staff have met with a wide range of interested stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, librarians, agencies, boards, and associations. As part of the deliberative process of implementing, revising, and promulgating this regulation, those comments and feedback have been taken into account, been considered, they're reflected here, and again, I've been asked to review and provide some commentary on it. At a high level, broad themes, as I read these revisions, they do a couple of things. One, they in some ways make this version slightly narrower than the version we looked at two months ago. That's by removing both the FCC regulatory standard, which Superintendent mentioned briefly earlier, and by changing the ability from any person in the district to file a challenge to being a person with a student in the district. So it's slightly narrow in that sense. Secondly, these amendments, as I see them, in some ways make the administrative and logistical process clearer and easier, both on this board and on the district boards that will be implementing it. Let's move on to the second section of my comments, which is to go through and talk briefly about the changes. I believe each of you has a copy, probably the same one that I've got here, showing the red lines. We'll start on the first page. There's a few changes in Section 1A that are non-substantive, but to clarify that the schools we're talking about are, in fact, South Carolina K-12 public schools. I think that's unremarkable. Subsection C of Roman numeral 1, you'll see, we've already spoken briefly about the fact that it struck out or proposes to remove reliance on or incorporation by reference of FCC regulatory guidance. From an implementation standpoint, doing that makes the process simpler. If you're a lawyer, particularly if you're a lawyer who practices in this area, you're very comfortable reading precedent, discerning nuanced differences and distinctions between cases, but frankly, that's not practicable for a district board who has many things to do, to do. So by removing reference to FCC regulation, it makes the standard that applies simpler, cleaner, clearer, and easier to apply. Toward the bottom of that page, under Roman numeral 2A, you'll see that previously it referred to school-sponsored extracurricular activity, that's been changed to say school-controlled extracurricular activity, which I don't believe has a material or substantive change, but makes it a little bit cleaner and clearer for schools to implement. Next page. Top of the page, you'll see there's a new subsection B, that as I understand it, was inadvertently omitted from the prior version. It has two things going on in it. The first, you'll see, the District Board of Trustees is ultimately responsible for the selection for continued use of all instructional materials. Let me pause there. That's a fairly unremarkable proposition of law, because a school district's board of trustees is already ultimately responsible for everything that happens in that district, in the same way that a corporation's board of trustees is ultimately responsible for everything that occurs in or through the corporation. You can continue reading, I won't read the whole thing aloud to you. The second section, if you go about four lines down, you'll see after the parenthetical word "instructional materials," there's a sentence that begins, "A district board may..." Let me read that to you. "A district's board may, but is not required to prospectively, review and assess its existing instructional materials for compliance with this regulation." Let me pause there. One of the comments we heard in the public comment period at the last hearing, and I think we even heard overtones of this morning, was that this regulation, the view that this regulation would impose an onerous and untenable burden on school district boards, on school administrators, and on teachers to affirmatively and prospectively go and review tens of thousands of books and other materials already in the district to ensure they're compliant. The regulation never required that, and now it's made more clear by expressly saying it doesn't require that. There's no need for anyone to go and spend the summer trying to read 17,000 books in the library just to make sure they all comply. If you keep reading, alternatively, a district board may simply review and assess materials on a case-by-case basis when they get challenged. And frankly, that's realistically the more likely way that materials will be reviewed, they'll be challenged and then reviewed. Keep moving down, excuse me, down that page, you'll see in subsection D, about halfway down the page, this is referring to a list of instructional materials. At the end of that, you'll see that previously, it allowed for any person residing in the district to request a list. That's been changed now to say that a parent or legal guardian of a student in the district can request that list. We'll see a change similar to that in a couple of other spots. You can flip to the next page, because the page at the bottom says page two. About one-third of the way down the page, Roman numeral four, again, same change we just talked about, this has to do with the complaint process, which now applies to a parent or legal guardian of a student in the district. You'll see one thing that's added in that introductory paragraph to Section 4, is that a complainant, before submitting the complaint form, that's been promulgated by the Department of Education, will have to have made a good faith effort to address their concern regarding noncompliance with this regulation with the school-level or district-level staff. We heard comments, again, at the last public hearing and today about that, so that's been added in, in response to the feedback that's been received. Subsection A, about halfway down the page, you'll see this refers to the complaint form. Again, to back up a step, part of the goal of this regulation is to minimize the acrimony that we've heard about even today, that occurs at some district board meetings and at the district level, by simplifying, clarifying, and ensuring uniformity across the process. One, one part of that is, the department will issue a complaint form that everyone will use to file their complaints. You'll see that in subsection A. Bottom of this page, subsection B, you'll see there's six or seven underlined lines there indicating new material. Those underlined lines do two things. The first of the sentence allows a district board to do similar to what this board did about 75 minutes ago, which is to understand that in the interests of time, it may be necessary to reasonably and even-handedly limit the number and extent, the time limit, on public comments. District boards already have that authority to do that, but we wanted to make it express, it is now expressed here, that they have that ability to do so. The key things I'd point out there is, it needs to be both reasonable and even-handed, and you all understand what that means, we've just seen it demonstrated here today. The second thing that that new language does, toward the bottom of that, you'll see this is, the sentence beginning with "a district board may" in its discretion. It allows a district board, it specifically contemplates a district board doing, again, what this board often does, which is to form a committee formed of board members, fewer than the whole board, but a committee formed of board members who can take the initial review and assessment, and then come to the full board with a recommendation. The full district board still is responsible for reaching a decision, but in the interests of efficiency, it can authorize a committee of board members to take the first pass and then provide a report and recommendation. Let's flip to the next page. You'll see about a third of the way down the page, in subsection D, let me, let me describe it rather than reading it to you. This is, this is intended to aid efficiency. Let's imagine that there are, let's pick a number, seven districts across the state in which a particular book is in the process of being challenged. One of them is a little bit ahead of schedule of the others, and they make a decision, and then that decision gets appealed to the State Board of Education. For the sake of efficiency of the other six districts, we're about to get a decision within the 90-day timeframe from this board, we don't need them to be spending time, the other six boards, trying to reach a decision. So this authorizes them to stay their proceeding, which is legally for pause their proceeding, to suspend it temporarily, to await the decision from the State Board of Education. If we flip to the next page, halfway down, this is the page at the bottom, it says page four, halfway down, subsection C. This is a procedural mechanism that, probably the simplest way for me to describe it would be to analogize to the way our state court system works. Typically, you file a lawsuit in what we call circuit court, the trial-level court. After that court decides the case, whether by jury or bench trial or dispositive motion, a party may then appeal it to our Court of Appeals, that's our intermediate court of appeals. There are a few exceptions that don't matter for this discussion, where you can go straight to the Supreme Court. But by and large, the vast majority of cases, you appeal to the Court of Appeals, it's then briefed, argued, and decided, and only then can one of the parties appeal to the state Supreme Court. But, there are certain situations in which when a party has initially filed their appeal, as they're supposed to at the South Carolina Court of Appeals, they can ask the Supreme Court, they can say, hey, this case is of such significance, it's going to get to you sooner or later, so let's just save some time, would you please just take the case right now, not wait for the Court of Appeals to rule? Or, the Supreme Court can actually do that on its own initiative, it can reach down and take a case up. What this new subsection C does is effectively allow that same type of mechanism to be employed in the book review process. So you'll see, it says that a district board that's received a complaint may, by written request, ask the State Board of Education to take jurisdiction, to take the first crack at reviewing and rendering a decision on the book. The decision of whether or not to grant that request is in the discretion of this board, so it's, it's in your discretion whether or not to grant such a request, or, if you think it best, to decline it and allow the district board to have the first level of review and decision on it. Last page, you'll see there's a new subsection D. It essentially acknowledges that already existing, in statutory law, case law, and South Carolina precedent, is the right of a parent to opt their child out of certain instructional material. And like the other subsections in this final section of the reg, this is acknowledging that nothing in this regulation alters or changes that ability. And again, that's not remarkable, a regulation can't supersede a statute, and if there's already a statute, and there is, that allows parents to have certain opt-out rights, then this regulation or any decision made pursuant to this regulation doesn't override or negate the statute. All right? That concludes Section 2 of my comments. We're on a glide path toward completion, I told you it'd be shorter than it was last time. Section 3 of the things I want to talk about are to respond briefly to a few of the comments that we heard this morning. First, I'm not sure where this, where this narrative has come from. We've heard reference to the demonization of teachers and librarians. It's possible, I suppose, that people out there in the world are doing that, I haven't heard any of that from this board. I share a checking account and a mortgage with a public school teacher, and I certainly have only seen, in my experience, good faith actors with the best interests of our children at heart. Nothing in this regulation threatens them, penalizes them, or will be used as some sort of a gotcha tool, and it's not something that they ought to be afraid of, and I certainly don't believe that any of us here today have or would seek to demonize or cast ill motives upon them. One other thing that was mentioned was reference to South Carolina Code, Section 16-15-305. All right, so this is back on page, I don't remember if it's page one or page two, early in the regulation, it incorporates by reference a statutory definition of sexual conduct. The comment that was made, and I think you've probably received it in your emails as well, is that rather than incorporating only subsection C1 of that statutory definition, that you could consider adding subsection B to it as well, which is a section that refers to a reasonable person standard and taking the work as a whole, and determining if it has any artistic merit, or all that sort of thing. I'm not going to tell you whether you should or not, but I will tell you what will happen if you do. It's your call, it's your judgment whether or not to include it or not, but here's what will happen. The same concern that animated the removal of the FCC regs will be negated, right? Why did the FCC regs get deleted by the committee in this proposed amendment? Because they're complicated. If you're a lawyer who likes reading cases and grappling with nuanced distinctions and knows what phrases like prurient interest mean, well, sure, then you can look at the FCC regs and interpret a case law and figure out what they mean and apply them, but they're complicated, and they're time-consuming, and they're less clear than we could be. That, as I understand it, is the reason the FCC regs were removed, that would be undone by the reintroduction of subsection B of the statute in question, right? We just went from a pretty clear standard, put in the law, we would call a bright-line rule, to one that is much, much more subjective. The reasonable person standard is fairly famously subjective, consideration as a whole, artistic merit, all this sort of thing. It just becomes more difficult to apply and introduces more variability in the outcomes. Now, again, it's up to you if you want to include that or not, but that would be the effect of it if you did. I think I've got maybe two more comments, perhaps three. One would be, we heard a rhetorical question asked, why could a student go home and experience something that they cannot read at- something that they cannot read at school? And I think the reference was, right, once you're over the age of 16, in South Carolina, that's the age of consent, and that a student of that age can legally consent to engage in sexual activity, why can't they then read about people engaging in sexual activity at school? Well, for a whole lot of reasons. There's all kinds of things that a person can do legally that they can't do at school. A person of 16 or 18 years old is allowed to own a gun. They're allowed to shoot guns and buy guns. But we don't do it at school. There are people, there are, each of us, of whatever age, have a constitutional right to exercise certain religious beliefs and activities, but that doesn't mean that the school itself has to fund them. Right? And that's what we're talking about here, that's a key distinction. We're not talking about the school accommodating student expression. Right? Let's use the same analogy. A student of faith, whatever it may be, has a free exercise right to exercise his or her faith, including at school. But that doesn't mean that the school has to fund it. In fact, that's a critical distinction of what's known as release-time Bible education. It accommodates a student's free exercise right, but clearly says the school doesn't fund it and it doesn't occur on school ground. Let's bring it back to this context. A student may have the ability to do something or to read something, but it doesn't mean that the school has to buy it, provide it, house it, and teach it. Right? This isn't student speech we're talking about. These are books bought by government employees using government money, put into government buildings as part of a government program. It's government speech. Those are different rules than private speech or expression. I think the last thing I'll mention is that one of the comments noted the need for appropriate and suitable health education or sex education and training on other matters related thereto. The only response to that is, on the final page of the regulation, you'll see it specifically says that nothing in this regulation does, or frankly, could, as a matter of legal authority, supersede South Carolina's comprehensive health education law, Gavin's law, Aaron's law. So that's already been factored in and taken care of. The last thing I'll say, and I'll wrap up this section and be happy to answer any questions, is that this regulation doesn't censor anyone. It refers to the government selection of government materials in a government program with government funds. Students are still free to speak and act and read as they wish, but on their own time and on their own dime, not at the expense of the government as part of a public school education. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have, and if not, I'd be happy to sit down.
Are there, yes ma'am, are there any questions for the presenter, Ms. Collier?
On page 2, the phrase "good faith effort" in Section 4, the first paragraph.
Yes, ma'am.
Seems vague to me. I'm just wondering if there's any clarifying language for "good faith effort" in regards to a person who brings a complaint, having first made a good faith effort to address their concerns regarding that complaint? That just, that phrasing is a bit vague, in my opinion, and I think that it might be beneficial to clarify exactly what that means, maybe with a parenthetical statement of some sort. What is it, how far does a good faith effort has to go? What maybe, maybe some examples of what that might entail?
Sure. So the faith, a good, the phrase "a good faith effort" leaves some room for interpretation, and often in statutes or regulations, that's by design, that's by intent. It can be difficult to proscriptively and prescriptively define what that must be. Right? And part of the goal there is that in different contexts, different situations, that might include, well, let me back up, there's both a reasonableness element to it, right? And the method, right? Good faith is going to imply both. So the idea here is to allow for some degree of, again, good faith, honest broker effort to talk to the teacher or whoever the appropriate person would be. The idea is that, and again, I'm sort of importing how other similar phrases would be or have been interpreted in other contexts. Sending a teacher an email at, let's say, 9:30 PM, and then filing the complaint at 9:30 AM the next day, come on, that's not a good faith effort to talk to a person. They probably didn't even see that email before you filed the complaint. Now, do we want to proscriptively say you have to allow seven days to pass between initiating that effort? I don't think so, because even then, each situation, a good faith effort is going to play out a little bit differently. Right? What if, again, to use the example, you send an email, let's say the teacher writes back to set up a meeting, that might take a day or two, but if it took 20 days, that's probably too long, right? You shouldn't have to, does that make sense? We could play out 100 scenarios, but the idea is to leave a degree of flexibility within a good faith, honest effort to speak to someone before filing the complaint.
And I do understand that, and I don't know that there is language that would clarify on either side well enough, but I guess I was thinking in terms of that phrase being abused on either side, on the side of someone making a complaint, as in the example that you gave, but it also could be abused on the side of a teacher or a school or a district that uses that as a way to sort of go around dealing with the complaint in a timely fashion.
And your point is well-taken, that is a fair point. Here, I think, is the solution to that, maybe "solution" is too strong of a word. It's the same way that phrases like that are going to be fleshed out in their meaning in other contexts. It's that the deliberative body that decides these cases will have a chance to provide guidance. Now, that's, one of the downsides of, that's essentially like a common law system of interpreting and determining sort of what are the guidelines there, and it develops over time. So when the first complaint is filed, we'll have a sense of what we think good faith means, but let's say that after 180 days, it gets to this board and this board renders a decision, that's the opportunity then for these, I'm not good at counting quickly, 17 people approximately, for this group of people, to include something in a decision, to say, we note, and again, I'm just making up a hypothetical here, we note that the complainant attempted three times to speak with the teacher, and only after conferring with him or her filed the complaint, thereby satisfying the good faith requirement of subsection 4, does that make sense? You could specifically say, yep, that was a good faith effort, or in other instances, say, no, it wasn't. We think at least a reasonable amount of school days should pass. Does that make sense?
It does.
You can fill in some of those interpretive guidelines as you implement, as you render decisions.
Is that phraseology typically used in legal documents?
It would be very, very often used in some legal documents, not all.
Can I offer a point here real quick as well? In the legislation that is currently in conference in the General Assembly, this is a framework that they use, and so I believe that pulling from that example, we've tried to keep it as consistent as possible with what they're doing. So to your point, this is something that is used in other contexts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, yes, Ms. Lawler?
And I think my question or comment also goes to Section 4. I'd just like for you to clarify, in case maybe it doesn't relate only to Section 4. Currently, as written, a valid complainant would be allowed to come before, to file a complaint, and that ability is unlimited?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the very tail end of that.
Yes, a complainant can file a complaint or file a petition, and that ability is currently unlimited as written. Meaning I could come before, I could, if I wanted to, as this is written, I could, let's say, file 200 petitions.
Okay, I see. Yeah, currently, there is no express limitation to prevent people from abusing the process, or what you and I may perhaps rightly believe as abusive process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Allison?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just have a couple of clarifications. First of all, we know that our school boards in our districts are elected by the people, and they set, basically, they set policy and hire and fire the superintendent. With that said, if a school board already has a policy in place concerning this matter that we're taking up today, and by the way, thank you for all that you've given us in this, if they have a policy of their own, and it's actually stronger than the policy that we possibly would pass today, would that go forward as the district policy, they can carry out that policy?
So it may be helpful if I refer you to page, I think it's actually page 6, but at the bottom it says page 5, because the cover page didn't get a number. You'll see at the top of the page, subsection A, this regulation shall, upon its effective date, preempt, supersede, and replace any district, and I'm leaving out some, any district policy, to the extent such policy or program is inconsistent with this regulation.
Okay, inconsistent, I understand, but what if it goes further?
That's a hard question to answer in the abstract. It would be easier to answer in the specific, but hypothetically, if a district had a requirement that was different from, but not inconsistent with, this regulation, then it could continue.
Okay, let me give you an example and see if that would help. This goes to that a district can set a part of their board to oversee the books, to look at the books and that kind of thing, and bring a recommendation back to the full board. There are policies already set in some districts that allow parents to sit on those boards, or a teacher to sit on the board, or, you know, diversity on the board. If that policy is stronger in that amount, how does it affect us here with this amendment?
So that example, and again, there'd probably be dozens of others, that one, I think, actually would be arguably inconsistent with this regulation, I'd have to flip to it.
Yeah, because you specifically point out that it must be a member of the vote.
Right. It authorizes the use of a committee composed of board members and only consisting of board members. I think the implication there is, that's the committee you can use, not another.
Okay, you use that committee, but if the policy allows parents to sit in on that, that is not inconsistent, is it?
I don't think that it would be impermissible or inconsistent for there to be observers or even commenters, as long as the committee is comprised, the people voting in the committee are board members.
Okay, one other thing, and I hate to prolong this, but here we call on parents or guardians to be able to bring the complaint on the book, but that does not keep someone petitioning the board to go before the board to speak against something, or does it, or that they could send petitions or anything like that? They just can't, in this case, they can't ignore an administrative procedure. Correct? Do you understand?
I think I do. I'm going to try to answer it, and if I answer something different than you asked, tell me. So as the first piece of it, the public comment hearing that this district board holds, there's nothing in the reg that says that only parents and legal guardians of students may appear to offer comments. All it says is, parents and legal guardians are the ones who can initiate the process. As to the second piece of your question, there's nothing that this regulation does, or frankly, can do, to limit existing First Amendment right of petition and grievance that any person can file a complaint with their representatives. Now, they can file a complaint, it doesn't initiate this process, it may initiate a different process, but they're certainly free to do that.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, sir?
If I may, so you addressed my concern with First Amendment. Since the process would be different for someone who does not have a child in the district, does that in some way violate their 14th Amendment protections of equal protection?
Equal protection or due process, and the answer is no. Equal protection and due process require, and I'm speaking very high level broadly, require similarly situated people to be treated the same. And in this instance, you've got a material distinction between the one and the other, and therefore, they'd be able to be treated differently, though perhaps with some similarities. We could spin out a whole series of hypotheticals there, but the fact that they're not precisely similarly situated alleviates that concern.
I still have concerns about removing the other folks in the district, that, you know, the idea of taxpayer standing still is very important for me.
And again, to be clear, I've got no dog in this fight, I'm just here to advise and offer. But so to that extent, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with either way. The only thing I would point out is that taxpayer standing, and again, that, I guess let me back up for a second. Standing itself is both a constitutional Article III requirement and a series of prudential requirements that have been created by the Article III federal courts, and it's generally mirrored in the state court systems, but it's courts we're talking about, right? That's separate from what we talked about a minute ago, and you mentioned this morning in the committee meeting, sort of the rights of petition and grievance and redress. Right? Those are not limited to the court system, right? Those exist to go directly to the representatives of the people, the legislature. So that's one distinction. Secondly, even within the judicial system, whether it's federal Article III or at a state level, taxpayer standing, while it does exist, is an anomaly. It's the exception. The general baseline rule that applies to 98% of cases is that the only person who has standing to bring a case is one who is personally, or in the case of a corporation collectively, harmed, right, or injured by the action, and we go through the whole analysis, injury, grievance, redress, and redressability, that sort of thing. So my main point, which I don't need you to belabor, is that taxpayer standing is in fact a somewhat anomalous exception to the general rule, and that it applies only in the court system, and there's still otherwise petition available. That may or may not change your mind, and if it does or doesn't, that's fine, just a few thoughts on it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, yes, again, Ms. Allison.
I'm sorry, I'm late. Under Section 1615-305(c)(1), which is in our South Carolina Code of laws, there is already, this is already in statute, what sexual conduct means. I heard a lot today, and I've heard a lot over the thousands of input, which was great that we've gotten, but the misinterpretation of what is trying to be considered here as age-appropriate and that type of thing, so when we speak to sexual conduct means, that is already in statute, am I correct?
That's right. It's already, there's already a definition in statute that is being incorporated by reference.
Very good.
Yes, sir, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question's procedural in nature, I think I know the answer, but I don't want to assume it, and I think it would be beneficial for the folks here today. If we choose to pass a regulation in some form today, then it goes to legislature. They in turn can take it as written, or they can take stuff out and put stuff in as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what, if something were to pass today, it's not necessarily the final form of what it would look like if it becomes qualified.
Let me respond to that, and then if the parliamentarian has different or additional knowledge, he can correct me, to the extent it's a matter of parliamentary. But yes, you're right, if this board were to vote to advance this regulation to the next step of the process, that process is to send it on the one hand, to send it to both chambers of the General Assembly, right? So you'd send it to the Speaker of the House and to the President of the Senate. Upon receipt, they would assign it to the appropriate respective committee in that chamber. That committee would then review it, meet, talk about it, vote about it, and the options are, they could either, by separate committee vote, agree to move forward, and if so, the next step would be for those two committees to collaborate and come to some sort of joint written, I don't know if you'd say a joint resolution or a joint agreement, to adopt and accept it, or if they have concerns, they could effectively, to use a legal term, remand it back for further consideration. But yeah, it goes to the General Assembly, where there'll be another layer of review, comment, discussion, and approval.
And so that clarifies it for me, so if anybody or everybody leaves unhappy today, it's not necessarily over.
Fair.
And any other questions? Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. And before I ask this question, I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to send you down a rabbit... a rabbit hole, because I know everyone has worked really hard to get this regulation into a state where most parties can't agree. Am I correct? And I'm at section, I'm on page one, C, four and five in particular. Am I correct in saying that this regulation as written does allow for consideration of literary or educational merit, but only in the context of library shelf space, like physical space, or kind of the divvying up of instructional time? And I'm happy to ask you, ask that question differently if it's unclear.
I think, I'm going to try to answer it, and if my answer doesn't answer the question you're asking, well, ask it again. Here's, I think, the simplest way to think of it, right? So looking at that page one, in, you're looking at subsection C. Look a little bit higher up the page first, and we're incorporating a few other things, right? So if you think of it as a decision tree or a flow chart, right, the first box in the decision tree you get to is age and developmentally appropriate, right? We've already talked about the definition of that.
Add nothing.
Right, so that's kind of a circuit breaker that could, that can flip. Once you pass that, then you're moving down, down the decision tree, the flow chart. Anything that passes through that first circuit breaker now can be assessed under these five elements here. And I guess, this will be an analogy that you'll understand may be less helpful to the non-lawyers. It's like Article III standing, right? There's Article III requirements, and then there's prudential considerations. You've kind of got a circuit breaker switch, and then once you pass that, there's some other considerations you can take into account. Am I answering your question?
We're very nearly there.
Okay.
So to the degree that the language specific to C, four and five is used, that is only in relation to actual shelf space in the library or to, I guess, the teacher instructor librarians' decision about how they're implementing the time that they use to instruct. Because it's, those, that particular phrase is only present twice in the regulation.
So let me see if this is responsive. I'm not trying to avoid the question, but as I understand it, and this is just from reading a lot of the Lawrie articles, the literature out there on this sort of case law, the thinking is that, or one view of school instructional material is that once a book gets in, it can never be removed. Like, once it's in, it's in. And at some point, you run out of room. And so the thinking is, like, even books that are in the system that are appropriate, there's got to be some sort of guiding principles for how do we evaluate which ones are the best ones, right? Like, at some point, we run out of room, we run out of hours in the day, maybe there's a better book that's written about, right? Like, listen, I love Hemingway, The Old Man and the Sea, but maybe there's a better book to exemplify that particular genre of literature. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it's trying to provide some guidelines for how do we think through, right? And here's how we don't think through it. We don't, and it says this a number of times, we don't get rid of it because we don't like books about Republicans, or we don't like books written by Democrats, right? No, 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 no. These are the kind of factors we're going to look at, not disagreement with ideological viewpoints or political persuasion or things like that.
You have answered my question, we got there.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Anyone? May I ask, as it stands now, and I think Ms. Allison will know, Senate and House both have something in the hopper already, and what we're attempting to do is to channel that in a direction much to what you had said, and that is, we provide something, however, whatever something we provide, then is only, I mean, they could take it, use it, massage it, or change it. But we're trying hard to come up with something that we hope they will more accept than not. Is that sort of the correctness in this?
Right, two points in response. One, as part of their process, they're going to try to harmonize and make sure that, obviously, the reg aligns with their statute. And then secondly, and this is true of every agency regulation or should be true, is that an agency regulation is much more able and capable, due both to, just the way it works and subject matter expertise, to implement and effectuate the law, right? The process that's laid out here is not going to be found in the statute, or at least it'd be quite unusual and curious for it to be. So they give sort of a skeleton, and this fills in the...
And again, you know, there are marked changes from where it was back in November to where it is now, and, you know, kudos to Superintendent Weaver in that she has come to the Superintendents Association, she has met with the subgroup of superintendents, she has worked with, as we all have had opportunities to meet with, our constituents and work through, and at this point, and you said it, I guess, and that is, that we finish with something, but that nobody gets to feel completely vindicated or affirmed, and that the compromise leaves us all feeling, wishing more, but at least something. I like the way you put that.
If I, and I may be digging a hole deeper by saying anything else, Mr. Chair, but I think you articulated correctly what I was trying to say, is that there are other efforts going on and that this board did not punt and say, "We'll just wait and see what they do." We put a lot of time and effort and work and listening to people to try to craft something that addresses the need, that we can send over and be part of the discussion they're having with it. So that's what we're doing. It's not that we're just, we could have just passed the first version, sent it over there, and let them do what they want to with it. So I think you more accurately, articulately, probably got the message across what I was trying to say with that question.
No, and again, anyone else? All right, if there are no other questions at this time, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very, very much. At this time, I would entertain a motion. Is there then a motion to approve the regulation as today presented by Mr. Coleman? As of today?
As amended.
As amended, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. As amended, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that a motion as amended today.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a second?
I will give a caution second. Go ahead. Anyway, that's all good.
All right. Does anyone wish at this juncture to be heard on this matter?
And, Mr. Parliamentarian, also, would this be the appropriate time to offer any amendments to the amended regulation?
This is the time to deliberate and/or amend.
Okay. Then, in regards to section four A, I would offer that we consider adding, after the second sentence, that no complainant shall file more than five petitions in any given calendar month.
Where would that be? One more time, I'm sorry.
No complainant shall file more than five petitions in any given calendar month.
All right, this is, I'm just trying to re, and you had put that where exactly in the document, I'm sorry.
I thought that the most appropriate place would be subsection four A, that would be the second sentence of A.
So it would be follow the word "regulation" and before the word "on."
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, at this point, thank you to the parliamentarian, a motion has been made to amend the pending regulation. Is there a second to that?
No move.
All right, second by Mr. Harrington. With that, we then would go to the deliberation, and at that point, to adopt this proposed amendment, which would further describe by giving a, an amount, a quantity, to the number of times a person can say something during a calendar month. So it only amends the regulation pending before the floor. In other words, adding to, no complainant shall file more than five petitions during a calendar month would be added. This is not a final vote for or against the regulation. Okay. All right. On the advice of counsel, they had said, thank you, it's been brought to attention, it's been seconded. Is there any conversation? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I ask why the number five? Is there a rationale for five?
There was no specific rationale for five. My thinking was just that there should be some parameter in place that just prevents our school boards from being bogged down in multiple complaints from the same person, not, and I don't want to limit their ability to bring their interest before the board, but just to give some limit that I think would be reasonable in a given time period, and five felt reasonable to me, but if anyone else has a number that seems more reasonable, you know, I'm happy to be persuaded otherwise than to amend my proposed amendment to the amendment.
She said, right, she said, no complainant.
Okay, no complainant shall file more than five petitions during a calendar month.
If you want to come back, you want to come in January, February, March, even that's what you want to do with your spare time, I think we would welcome you, but...
So, and again, still holding, still holding with where we are. It's still indicating, and I will defer to you, to Mr. Coleman, we're still looking at this point, parent and/or legal guardian.
That's how complainant is defined.
That is, as it is at this moment, correct?
That's right.
So that is a request to be brought forward. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
I'll for the question.
I call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The ayes have it, so that would then be added, linking back to Mr. Coleman just as we stand. Again, that is only an amendment to the amended request that was brought forward to us today. Again, I will say, anyone else? All right, then the question is whether to adopt proposed Regulation 43170, coupled with the amendment that says no complainant shall file more than five petitions during a calendar month, adding that, to this, all in favor of adopting proposed Regulation 43170 with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much for this, and again, I do think, I think you're on to something. I think whatever we give is going to be sent with the effort that we have tried, something. And whether it goes beyond, and to what extent it does, I don't know. So thank you very, very much. In looking further, there are no information items. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for deferring your time. Travel forms, please remind any SB members who have not turned in their travel forms to give their form trace to Tracy before they leave. With that, we say thank you very much and good day.
You have to...
I have to, I have a motion, y'all don't leave yet. Motion, motion to adjourn.
No move.
All right, anybody want a second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.